Give us the opportunity, Lord, to make the good decision for the people. We ask, Lord, that you bless all the mothers out there who had Mother's Day in the past last couple of weeks. And we enjoy, I hope you enjoy all the time that you have with your families. We also ask, Lord, that you protect all those who lost their loved ones during this terrible pandemic that we've been having. They were here today, Lord. We ask that you forgive us, Lord, and keep us strength. Keep us strong, make us happy, and continue to move forward in our lives. We ask, Lord, that you protect us. Give us the hope and wisdom to move forward with all these decisions that Navajo Nation needs to make. And that you bless every one of us, Lord Jesus Christ, so that we can make those right decisions for the people. We ask all these things in Navajo, Lord Jesus Christ. And we ask that you move us forward here today. Thank you, Lord, for all the wonderful blessings you have given us upon this day and the days in the past. Please move us forward, Lord Jesus Christ, so that we can continue to work hard, make those right decisions that we need to make for the people. We ask all these blessings, Lord, for you and Navajo Nation across the world. Amen.
Thank you, Honorable Purnell Haluna. Thank you for that prayer that humbles all of us. Committee members, are there any announcements?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Benali.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee. I just need to know who's going to be on travel this week to Richfield, Utah. Also, how many will be there on Wednesday evening to attend the banquet? That's what the school is requesting a head count for. Thank you.
Ms. Benali, I will not be making the banquet or the graduation activities at Richfield or at Sevier School District.
Okay.
I have the commencement locally that I've been invited to, so.
Okay, thank you.
So. Maybe members?
Vice Chair Slater? Thank you. I just wanted to follow up to my text on this, Benali. I will not be attending the Richfield commencement either.
Okay, anybody else? Not? Let's go to recognizing guests and visiting officials. Yes, it's just the heads members and staff. Let's go to reviewing and adopting the proposed agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee. You have your proposed agenda for the Health Education and Human Services Committee, 24th Navajo Nation Council Special Meeting, May 23, 2022, at 10:00 a.m., presiding the Honorable Jeff E. Soe Chairperson, the Honorable Carl R. Slater, Vice Chairperson, via telecommunications, Winderock, Navajo Nation, Arizona. One, call meeting to order, roll call, invocation announcements. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials. Three, review and adopt agenda. Four, review and adopt journals. The journals is missed, there's a typo on the date, and it's supposed to read May 18th, however, it does state May 11, 22 as a regular meeting. Five, receiving reports, none. Seven, new business. A is a budget transfer for the Health Education and Human Services Committee for business unit number 101030, and it's regarding some line items, budgets that are in the negative, and also to consider other budget transfers. And the presenter is the Legislative Advisor with the Office of Legislative Services. Eight, close of meeting announcements and adjournment. And the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 6, as a Health Education and Human Services Committee work session at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Benali. Committee members, what's the wishes of the committee?
I motion.
Yeah, that is a pleasure. Thank you for being on the call. And all the committee members, I'll recognize the motion to adopt the agenda that's been read into the record. Do I have a second?
Second, Vice Chair Slater.
Thank you, Fattila, Vice Chair Carl R. Slater seconds the motion. Committee members, do we have any additions to the agenda that's been read into the record?
Vice Chair Slater, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I would propose, I know you had mentioned adding on this DSS in relation to the ACF letter that I received. I think that we should give them time to provide a presentation to us and prepare one. So I would recommend keeping the agenda as is for today, and that issue is going to take, I think, a more comprehensive conversation. So, but just my two cents. Thank you. And I suppose I can send the letter to Ms. Benali so that she can request for the program
Committee members, sorry, I dropped off that call. Just walking a few feet distance. So we'll, Vice Chair Carl Slater, could you share the email with Legislative Staff as well as Office of Legislative Counsel so that we can give staff enough time to develop a response? We don't know if that's what Ms. Begay was talking about when she was, we were scheduling that work session She did say something about family services, so. But I think the implications of that letter are pretty serious, so. But we'll see what the progress is on that, the response that they're supposed to provide. So with that, we'll just proceed with the motion as read into the record, the proposed agenda. Committee members, all in favor? Mr. Moes?
Or Ms. Benali?
Morning, sir. Can you hear me?
Hello, we are at H.A.
Morning, sir.
Roll call.
Sorry, sir, on the agenda. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Purnell Haluna?
Haluna votes green.
Honorable Purnell Haluna votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater?
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene Soe?
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene Soe votes green. Honorable Edison J. Unica? Honorable Edison J. Unica? Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. A vote of four in favor, zero opposed, and the chair not voting. So we go on to reviewing and adopting the journals? Committee members?
Mr. Chair?
Motion, Haluna.
Okay, any additions to the journals? If not, committee members, all in favor? Mr. Moes, roll call votes on adopting the journal.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. green. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Purnell Haluna?
Green.
Honorable Purnell Haluna votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater?
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene Soe?
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene Soe? Honorable Edison J. Unica? Honorable Edison J. Unica? Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed?
Thank you. A vote of four in favor, zero opposed, the chair not voting. Ms. Angelita Benali, next item on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, you've completed the number four for the journals for May 18, 2022 as a regular meeting. The next item is number five, receiving reports, none. Six is old business, none. Seven is new business, and it's regarding a budget transfer for the Health Education and Human Services Committee with the business unit number of 101030. And I did send everybody emailed a copy of the budget summary dated May 9, 2022. And it indicates that for account number 2900 Fringe Benefits, that the balance is in the negative by $678.42. Also, online item 33003300 Commercial/Charter, and it's regarding travel. And it's in the negative by $60.46. Also, if you could, if the Health Education and Human Services Committee members could look at the personal travel overall, is, right now, the balance is $6,129.61, and it's 82% expended. I believe that the $6,129.61 as of May 9, 2022 was at the beginning of, before all of the travel to, the invitations to attend graduations took place. So I believe that we're going to have to look in, look at covering the rest of the year's projected expenses for travel. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Angelita Benali. Committee members, do you have any questions regarding that aspect?
Ms. Benali, with this budget transfer, would, we would need formal action by the committee?
That's preferable. Mr. Chair, but we always need to have the budget as a balance. So it can be, you know, the decision of the chair and vice chair. But since it's on the agenda, it would need a motion and a second to at least cover what's in the red in the negative. Also, if you would consider possibly transferring more into the personal travel? Maybe a couple of thousand into personal travel? Because I believe that by the end of June, it'll probably be depleted. And by, by the end of July, the budget should be indicating as 75% expended. Because after July, we'll be entering the last quarter of the fiscal year.
Fair, I'll vote.
Yeah.
Responsible Vice Chair.
I would ask that we would have all of us do a comprehensive report of projection, and we can address the remaining issues then.
Here, this is Chad Abada, Office of the State Council.
Oh, hey.
Good morning. I read the Yens Sunday this morning, the types of budget revision, revisions. And it says, and I look at, budget revision involves a change to an approved budget and deviates from the approved financial plan. Like, oh, so there are three types of budget revision. And I just wanted to let you know that some of the budget revisions require oversight committee approval. And anyway, I just wanted to let you know. But let me get some more information on my end.
Thank you, Mr. Abada. Ms. Benali, in the ones that are in the, the counts that are in the red, where would your recommendation be to, but from what accounts do we make those transfers?
Mr. Chair, members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee, I, I would take it out of either the 4,000 line items, such as office supplies, operating supplies. The building spaces is $1,000, and none of that, it's, there's still a balance of $1,000. And usually that's for if we have to rent space, such as the chapters or maybe to rent, like a rental fee at a, to reserve a conference room for a meeting. And the other places, the equipment and supplies, which is also $1,000. And then you have your programs, which is, has a balance of $6,736.87. And that's in the 7,000 line items, along with training and professional dues, which is our, is $3,000. And $3,000 was budgeted, and $3,000 is the balance as of today. And there's, that one is for registration fees.
Committee members, Honorable Slater, with your motion, where would you recommend we take money out of to replenish? One, the two accounts that are in the red as well as putting more money into travel?
Chair Soe, did I hear a motion by Slater?
Yes, there's a motion by Honorable Carl R. Slater, Vice Chair. I haven't gotten a second yet.
I'll second that motion. They'll just pause it.
Oh, Chae, thank you. You sound like you're way far away, but you're only at LOC conference room. Thank you for getting on the call. Honorable Slater, taking your recommendations Ms. Benali, is Honorable Slater still on the call?
Yes, he is. I show him as not muted. He is clear to speak, Mr. Chair.
On, okay, some thoughts. The ones for the rentals, maybe we could leave a balance of $250 in there and transfer the monies to the two accounts that are in the red. And then there was a, another one that had a high dollar amount. Perhaps that's the one we could put as a preliminary item, about $3,000 into personnel travel.
Okay, you said $3,000?
Yeah, I think that was account number 7,000, did you say?
Right, right, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would recommend that, the chair recommends that. Committee members, are you all good with that?
Who?
Vice Chair, this is Haluna. I'm good, stat.
I need a second then. I don't, well, Ms. Benali. Benali.
I have a second from Haluna.
Oh, hang on. If Honorable Slater's not on the call, we'll need a new motion. Am I right?
He already, you recognize his motion? Okay, he dropped his call, yes.
Okay, yes, I think we need a new motion. Committee members?
Motion, Haluna?
Motion by S-member Honorable Purnell Haluna.
I can tell that Paul was.
And then we have a second by Honorable Paul Begay. Committee members? Any discussion? If not, then let's take it to a vote.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
That, Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Purnell Haluna?
Honorable Paul's green.
Honorable Purnell Haluna votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater? Honorable Carl Russell Slater? Honorable Charlene Soe?
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene Soe votes green. Honorable Edison J. Unica? Honorable Edison J. Unica? Honorable Carl Russell Slater? Honorable Edison J. Unica? Chair, a vote of three in favor, zero opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Moes. Three in favor, zero opposed, and one member losing cell phone connectivity, and the chair not voting. Thank you, committee members. Ms. Benali, next item on our agenda?
Mr. Chair, the next item is number eight, close of meeting announcements and adjournment. And the next meeting for the Health Education and Human Services Committee will be on Monday, June 6, as a work session at 9 o'clock. And then the next regular meeting is going to be Wednesday, June 8, 2022. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Benali. And then, New Mexico delegates. designated to attend a tribal summit. Both, oh gosh, by teleconference as well as remote. That'll be June 1st and 2nd. And for those traveling, it'll be in San Jose. For those just calling in, it'll be from wherever you're at. And we do have a federal and Navajo Nation Memorial Day on May 31, is it?
Mr. Chair? I believe that it's on June, my calendar indicates that it's on June 1st. And then on May 30th, Monday, May 30th, is Federal Memorial Day.
Okay, thank you. Committee members, any other announcement? If not, the chair is open for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to?
Chair, I motion.
I'll recognize Honorable Charlene So's motion to adjourn, second by Honorable Purnell Halona. All in favor? Mr. Moes, ro calls vote, please.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.?
Green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Purnell Halona?
Honorable Green.
Honorable Purnell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater? Honorable Carl Russell Slater? Honorable Charlene So?
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison J. Winika? Honorable Edison J. Winika votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater? Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, adjourned at 11:03 a.m.
Thank you, committee members. And for all of us that will be traveling in the next few days, safe travels, care of yourselves. We appreciate your attendance today. And hectic schedule with graduation events that still continue. So take care of yourself. We'll talk to you when we talk to you. Go on now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We adjourn.